Carl, can I get you to do the prayer?
Okay. Bow your heads. Dear Lord, we ask your blessing on this port, this port, the people that depend upon it. We ask that you guide us in our decisions, that they are for the betterment of those we serve. We ask this in your name.
Amen.
Kevin, the pledge.
And God, face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. Today is October 24. This is the Lake Charles Harbor and Terminal District regular meeting. The board encourages public comment and questions regarding all agenda items. Persons wishing to do so should complete a speaker's card, which is at the entrance to the boardroom. When speaking or asking a question on an agenda item, one should, in addition to completing the card, come to the microphone, be recognized, and provide your name, address, and phone number. Comments by individuals will be limited to three minutes. I'd like to thank everyone for coming. First agenda item is approval of the minutes for September 26, 2022.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Darbone, second by Mr. Gidry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. First submission is 2022-049. Mr. Self?
Yes, sir. Staff request to the Board of Commissioners to authorize the executive director to submit a capital outlay request for the project related to the berth four, five, and six wharf and shed reconstruction at City Docks, reauthorization. It's a reauthorization because we were previously approved by a capital outlay. We have some portion of the funding that's in priority five and another portion that's in priority two. And we're just resubmitting and requesting reauthorization for that project.
Mr. President, so moved.
All second. We have a motion by Mr. Prudham, second by Mr. Crelo. Any discussion?
On the submission on the South Louisiana Rail, are you going to make that part of this?
No, we have a separate submission on that one entirely. It was because it was added after we already...
I noticed it had a different number.
Yeah. It's fall. It's going to come up in just a minute.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments regarding this submission 049? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Submission 2022-050. Mr. Self?
Yes, sir. Staff request the Board of Commissioners to authorize the executive director to accept a lowest responsive bid from Alfred Palma LLC for the electrical modifications at BT1. Nick went out for bid in August for these electrical modifications at BT1, which are going to be necessary for our new equipment that's going to be arriving, the shiploaders and the hopper. We received four bids, with the lowest bid being at one point nine million by Alfred Palma.
Mr. President, I move acceptance of submission 2022-50.
I second.
Okay. And that includes amendment to the capital budget, correct?
Yes.
I mean, I'm asking as far as the motion.
Yep.
Mr. Crelo?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Darbone, your second includes amending the capital budget?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Submission 2022-051.
Staff request...
Yes, self?
Oh, sure. Staff request the Board of Commissioners to authorize the advertisement and receipt of bids for the new warehouse at City Docks in accordance with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development Port Priority Program. This is for the... We currently have back warehouses eight through 14, which will be demolished. A new, modern warehouse will be constructed at that site. That new warehouse will be 300, Nick? It'll be the number 300? Number three. It'll be titled Warehouse 300. But it's on the footprint of that eight-through-14 warehouse area, which will be handled, will handle a lot of the modern cargoes that we're handling these days.
Mr. President, I move on submission 2022-051.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gidry, second by Mr. Prudham. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Submission passes. Brings us to submission 2022-052 regarding CSRS. Benny, Mr. Self?
Staff request the Board of Commissioners to authorize the executive director to amend the professional services agreement with CSRS Disaster Recovery Management for Hurricane Recovery and Grant Management Services from Hurricane Laura, Hurricanes Laura, Delta, and Winter Storm Yuri. As you recall, we contracted with CSRS to handle all of our FEMA GOSEP grant reimbursements. At the top of this submission, you'll see that there's zero cost. The cost is 1.2, but they're zero budgeted because based on the calculation from FEMA, we anticipate it will be reimbursed by FEMA. That calculation is done at the bottom. At this point, we estimate about 135 million in FEMA-related claims, minus $45 million for insurance. That gets to about 90 million. And you take 5% of that, which is the overall threshold we must stay below, to get reimbursed by FEMA.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve submission 2022-052.
Second. Commision motion by Mr. Darbone, second by Mr. Gidry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage. Brings us to submission 2022-053. Election of Officers.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Mr. Gidry to move up to Secretary Treasurer and Mr. Darbone for Assistant Secretary Treasurer. Second.
Motion by Mr. Crelo, second by Mr. Prudham. Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I want to thank Ms. Judy. Unfortunately, it hasn't had to. Is there going to be an explanation given?
You want to think about Judy's...
Yeah, sure. Ms. McCleary was recently hired by the Golden Nugget and pursuant to state law, one, they're a tenant of ours, and two, being a gaming operator, casino operator regulated by state law, she can't be a public official and have any business dealings with the casino. So she chose to resign to avoid any conflicts that may exist. So we're going to miss her. She's been a great commissioner, but we're happy for her, excited for her new, her new job.
And keep our fingers crossed we get someone new appointed soon.
Yes. We notify our legislative delegation of the vacancy. They will make a nomination, I believe, to the governor, and he'll appoint from there. So that's the process.
Sure, I speak for everyone when I thank, give our thanks to Judy.
Yes.
Submission 2022-054. Authorizing executive director to submit a capital outlay request. Mr. Self?
Yes. Staff request the Board of Commissioners to authorize the executive director to submit a capital outlay request on behalf of the South Louisiana Rail Facility for the improvements to port property at the Turning Basin. We were contacted last week by the director of the South Louisiana Rail Facility, asking us to submit the application on their behalf. They're working with Meyer to prepare that application, which is... The deadline is actually November 1st, so it's going to have to be... And it's in the process. I know that Myers is working on the application. And again, the ports are really just kind of acting as a conduit. We've done it in the past for Leevac, and we did it for Farmers Rice Mill several years before that.
We have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move adoption of submission 2022-054.
I second.
Is that David? Okay. Motion by Mr. Crelo, second by Mr. Darbone. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Brings us to briefing notes. Update with Lake Charles Methanol?
Yes. We have a presentation to be viewed here, and we have on the line folks from Lake Charles Methanol to give the presentation. Linda, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. So I'm here with Don Mally, and I'm going to be making the presentation. And I was, I think in your office, it's not... You guys were kind enough in the spring to extend our lease option, and we wanted to give you an update on the project since then. So yeah, this is a little more formal than usual because we wanted to talk to you about how we're rebranding the project in light of where things are going in the world. So our first slide, we're focusing on our hydrogen production for conversion to blue methanol. Two trains, natural gas. We first make hydrogen in our auto thermal reformer and then move on to methanol. We're emphasizing hydrogen because in the last two major bills passed by Congress, the bipartisan infrastructure bill or law of November of 2021, as well as the Inflation Reduction Act in August of this year, they're really focusing on the movement to the hydrogen economy. And interestingly, hydrogen, it is important to be fuel, but it's mostly carried in other chemicals like methanol or like ammonia. About 98% of the hydrogen gets moved through conversion to other chemicals. So this project is right in line with that. And so we wanted to, as I said, rebrand the project so that we're in line with these new bills and the various incentives that they offer. So if we can move to the next slide? You guys are moving this, right?
Nope.
Perfect. So again, I'll refer to slides for the new economy. So now we describe the project as a clean hydrogen project. It would produce 550 million kilograms of hydrogen for conversion into 3.6 metric tons of blue, blue methanol, low-carbon blue methanol. And so we have very low carbon emissions. We'll talk on the next page of the progress we've made in the last few months. But in general, the attributes of the project, we have tank tender, long-term, off-take contracts. We've identified our equity, long-term equity, tax equity, investors. The DOE is still very interested in providing the debt for the project. We all know we have a premier site at reportedly Charles, and we have a 20-year contract in place to transport the CO2. We also have a long-term natural gas supply agreement. And we have a schedule that'll show our closing, which we are targeting for the third quarter of next year. So let me move to the next page. So on the permitting side, we have received permits for the project, but we'll have to modify them as we're moving away from the Petco project to all national gas fueled. Happily, the consequence of that is less emissions, and so the change in permitting should be, you know, a pretty reasonable process. So we are very close to finalizing our natural gas supply and transportation arrangements, and the permitting has started for the transportation. In the last few months, we've signed all of our off-take agreements for the methanol for 20 years. And we've also signed our agreement to, for providing all of our projects CO2 to be sequestered in secure geologic storage in Celine aquifers. Two comments on this area. Mr. Ringo participated in a reception last week. Don Mally was there as well. For one of our off-takers who wanted to meet and greet people in the area and judge for himself the support for the project. And it was a very, very successful meeting. They were very impressed with the level of support in the community for the project. And so we appreciate, Mr. Ringo, your participation in that. I also mentioned that one of our off-takes is planning on making a, the next couple of weeks, a press release. And we will likely make a press release at the same time. And we will keep Mr. Self and Mr. Ringo up to date on the timing of that so that they won't be surprised. But that's just another indication that the project continues to move forward. The DOE continues to be very interested, and we'll be working with them pretty soon. I'm happy to say on the construction contract side that we released our primary technology provider to put together the project, the PDP, the project design package, which is the critical path item in order to get the primary contractor to get started on their FEED work, which will happen at the very beginning of next year. So that's moving along quite nicely as well. Next slide, please. So here is our schedule. We're in the steel-blue area. The main tasks that need to be completed besides updating the permits are really to complete the engineering and the ABC agreement and to complete the DOE financing. The engineering will take about eight months. So from January, that gets us very close to September timeframe. We're hoping that we can pull all our vehicles together and do all these things simultaneously. The plant will take about three, a little over three years to build, and then it'll be in commercial operation, you know, for a long time under these 20-year off-take agreements. Next slide. The next two slides are kind of overall slides that remind us of the benefits of the project. We are capturing sequestering a million tons of CO2. It's significant. This page shows what's that equivalent to, and what does that really mean? It's equivalent to removing over 200,000 automobiles from the road or adding 200 utility-scale wind turbines, eliminating 2.3 million barrels of oil, limiting electricity use by 180,000 households, or the carbon, it's equal to the carbon sequestered by 16 million trees. So what this project's going to be doing on the CO2 side is really quite significant. Next page. And this, these, this page shows the financial benefits. It'll be over $4 billion of capital investment. A lot of that will benefit the area, be substantial employment during construction, really good high-paying jobs. We will be working with McNeese State about the establishment programs to train people for these jobs. There'll be significant tax revenues, sales tax revenues during the construction period. And of course, there's the economic multiplier effect of all that. So anyway, that's, that's our update on the project. Don, do you have anything to add to that? Are you... Oh. Can you guys hear Don? Because I can't hear him.
No, we cannot.
He's... He's had technical, having technical difficulties today with this stuff, so I don't think we can hear him.
That's fine.
Are there any questions from any of the commissioners about the project?
Linda, on the commitment from DOE, is that still $2 billion on the loan there?
We're hoping it's going to be more than that. We're thinking more like $3 billion. They have at least eight and a half billion. I actually think their authority has been increased. And they're going to have a lot to do with the hydrogen economy as well. They do, we just published some new guidelines related to the bipartisan structure law. So they're right in the mix of all this hydrogen stuff as well.
So the current commitment, is it tied to the old process? Or I noticed you, in one of the slides, had a comment that it's going to require a recommitment from DOE. Could you...
That's right.
...elaborate on the status of that?
Yes. We are always in contact with the DOE. And they, in terms of process, they asked if we submit a new Part One application describing the new project, which we have. And now they're wanting us to give up additional information. Interestingly, one of our potential equity partners had a call with the department that reported that they were looking at our project, and the DOE told them that the Lake Charles project is their highest, you know, their highest priority. So because what we're, what we're still doing in terms of sequestering carbon and our new process using the auto thermal reformer, not only captures a million tons of carbon, but it, it also reduces the carbon that's actually being generated right from the start. And so it's about a 90% reduction to conventional SMR technology. And so that's still of great interest to the DOE. So it's really, we're very confident of their support of the project. It's just a matter of process that we have to go through.
So of these 1,500 new manufacturing jobs that you guys are going to be able to produce, 750 are going to be permanent jobs and maybe 750 construction jobs? How do you break that down?
No, that's really just during the construction period. The permanent jobs at the plant are 200. Then there's a multiplier effect by having those jobs, because they come in the area, they have to buy houses, they buy houses, they buy groceries, they go out to eat. So there's a multiplier effect on that.
Any other questions for Linda? Linda, thank you so much for the update.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And then thank you, as always, for your support.
Okay. All right. Do we need to do anything as far as quarterly expenses? It's just a briefing note, right?
Briefing note.
All right. Brings us to the financials briefing. Cameron?
Yes, sir. So for the month of September 2022, we generated revenues of 3.6 million, which was around $500,000 favorable. We continue to see higher petroleum coke and additional revenue due to the transfer of petroleum byproducts. And this month, we also had additional bay rights simply due to timing. Because of those higher tonnages, we also saw higher operating expenses. So we were about $500,000 unfavorable in expenses. Non-operating revenues and expenses were around 13.1 million, which was 13 million favorable. It's primarily due to a receipt of funds related to a litigation settlement. EBITDA was around $500,000 and cash flow was 13.6 million. Again, a good portion of that is due to that settlement that we received. On the balance sheet side, most accounts, kind of the same story we've seen all year, changes due to hurricane recovery, the P3 insurance premiums, and GASB87. The one item I do want to point out is restricted cash, increased 14.1 million. Again, that's due to that settlement that we received, and the board authorized us to go ahead and put that into a restricted account, which, or restricted GL, which we did. So that's under restricted. That's really all the items I have to point out on the financials. If anyone has any questions? Thank you.
Anything on FEMA GOSEP?
I can just point out a couple of things. In the previous, in the prior month, we saw that the project total and current obligated decreased a significant amount. Well, as I mentioned, it fluctuates all the time. So this month, we actually see it start to go up as some of those amounts start to pass through FEMA and get approved. We'll see it continue to go up. We have one big project that they're working on, so we'll see that continue to rise hopefully over the next couple of months. Got it there.
Departmental reports. Channing?
I'm sorry. I thought Cameron was still going.
Cameron, you got... I'm sorry.
I'm good with that.
I thought you said that was all you had.
It's all for the GOSEP report. All I, I'll go with mine. We're really just mostly working on the budget right now, trying to get it tied together to have something to present to y'all hopefully early next month, so in the next week or so. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. All right. Channing?
Commissioners, I just want to remind you...
Commissioners, I just want to remind you of an upcoming energy project. We'll get it on the screen in a minute. Energy is undertaking to run some more lines. It's called the Mud Lake to Big Lake project. As I understand it, and this is a layman telling you what engineers are going to do, so please forgive me. They're running these lines both south of the intercoastal and they're crossing the Calquashou Ship Channel in order to have a second line going into the facilities. So it'll be a lot more reliable. And the two changes, the two crossings, we've got one crossing up here. I can't show you on the tele, on TVs. This is a crossing over the Calquashou River. The other crossing on the intercoastal is down here. So they're going to run a line over to the facilities over here, i.e. Lake Charles Methanol and some of the other, I'm sorry.
Lake Charles LNG.
I'm sorry, Lake Charles LNG. And it'll be available for Alcoa, Big Lake Fuels, et cetera. And the line down here will go service Cameron LNG plus whatever else eventually ends up south of there. The crossing on the channel is the one that we're most interested in. It's got a 237-foot minimum clearance. That's got everything factored in, heat, it's the bow of the line, all that sort of stuff. And that compares with the 178-foot clearance on the current High Lines. You see the wind ratings and the towers of construction. They think that that's going to be finished by about March. And the whole project looks like there, trying to have that scheduled, to have that finished for April. That's another view of it. That's the 237 right there. The lines are going to be run with helicopters once they get the two towers built.
Channing, what's the typical clearance for like the 210 bridge?
210 bridge is about 178 feet also.
210 bridge is 137?
Depends on, well, 137, depending on the tide, that changes. I don't think it's 137.
Every day.
178.
It's about 137.
137?
210 bridge is 137.
I stand corrected. But this is much higher than any of those other
Transmission.
I don't want to call them obstacles, but any of the other aerial crossings. If there are no other questions about my monthly report, this concludes what I have for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, operations, Todd?
Yes, sir. Currently at City Docks, we've got a bag ship that's here to, a milled rice bag ship that's here to load. Recently at City Docks, we've done about 19,000 tons of aluminum hydrate, cargo transfers, and some graphite cargo. Coming up, we've got two lumber vessels, about 33,000 metric cubic meters, another 14,000 in hydrate, and another structural steel shipment. And we have another bagged rice ship that's scheduled to load hopefully by the end of this month. At BT1, recently, we've, we've loaded about 3,000 tons of calcine, about 11,000 tons of raw coke, and a 36,000-ton baywright shipment on the schedule. We're hopefully going to finish the year strong. We've got two rutile ships, about 20,000, about, close to 90,000 tons of raw coke, and another 60,000 tons of baywright. So trying to stay busy. If you have any questions.
Cargo and trade, Terrance?
Yes, Mr. President. Currently working on two projects. One will be bringing in dried cement by vessel, going directly to barges. This will run for about 20 months if successful getting this bid. The other is bringing in about 30 barges of 40-foot, 36-inch diameter pipe. This will start the first part of next year, and it would run through 2024. This week, we also have two groups coming in, one interested in City Docks, possibly lease warehouse space for import-export operation. The other group is interested in industrial canal property. They have a history of building processing plants, so it's a potential big, big project. And also, we have a bid out about, for about 9,000 tons of aluminum incots, which I hope to hear back next week if it was successful or not. That's what I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Engineering, Nick?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. We have numerous projects out for, are some out for bid now at various stages, and then others going out for bid soon, Warehouse 300 we mentioned earlier. But I did want to give you an update on one project that's out for bid that's been a long time coming, and that's the Salier Rail Relocation Project. It's currently out. We're going to open bids on November 4th. We had a pre-bid last week when numerous contractors show up, so we had a lot of interest. This is part of the DOTD project for the Nelson Road Bridge Extension, which is also out for bid right now, which is, you know, I see a lot of people that know of that project. It's been around for a long time.
For a long time.
They plan to open bids November 9th. So we like to tell the story that the project file was opened in, I think, 1978 for that project.
Before you were bar.
That's all I have, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So on the tank demo and remediation, who's going to be the environmental overseer on that?
The overseer? Well, we'll have a Regan Brown port employee. He'll be there as well. But we'll also probably use Southland Environmental as our consultant to help us with the third-party inspections. And we also have a lab, we've been working with a lab, I'm blanking on the name right now, but we've been working on getting expedited test results and everything. That's going to be a key factor in getting the containers turned around.
And they helped you, helped you in preparing the bid package?
Yes.
Any reports from, on lobbying?
We do, actually. Emily Baca de Silva is here from Washington. She's going to, are you going to give a report? Great. Thank you, Emily.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and Commissioners. Thank you for having us here today. Emily Baca de Silva with the Peacock Group.
Welcome.
Southwest Louisiana transplant now living in Washington DC. I want you to know how much we appreciate the opportunity to represent you all in Washington and how much we've enjoyed working with your staff over the last, it'll be almost two years. You know, our job is basically to raise the profile of the port and the channel and ensure that sufficient federal funding flows to both the port and the channel, and we've been quite busy. As you may know, we've been working through some funding challenges in FY22 and just over the past couple of years. And I think a lot of that is due to the change in administration and its priorities. And so much of our recent work has been to reframe and reposition ourselves with the administration by highlighting some of the work that we know is a priority for the administration, such as environmental resiliency projects and green initiatives. So we've been focusing on those that both the port and the channel users are moving on. I'll give you a quick recap of FY22, where things stand currently for FY23, and where we hope to go for the next fiscal year, FY24. The original core work plan, which was released in the spring of this year for FY22, included only $17.5 million in O&amp;M funding for the channel. And as you may know, we needed $35.55 million, so it fell well short of that. So in the spring, in concert with the port staff, we began an all-out press, both with the Corps down here in Louisiana and at headquarters, and with our congressional delegation. Senator Kennedy first raised the issue with Lieutenant General Spellman. He's the head of the Corps at an FY23 budget hearing because he does sit on the subcommittee that appropriates funding for the Corps. And then he also sent a letter in May raising his concerns. So in May, the Corps issued its work plan for the remainder of the year. And we felt so great because the additional funding was included. However, they put restrictions on it, and they said, you can't use it to dredge, but you can use it for saltwater barrier and tainer gates projects, resiliency initiatives. So, you know, again, we began reaching out and we said, this, this isn't going to work. And again, your staff was doing the same. So in June, the Corps advised the port that the channel would be receiving additional unrestricted, unrestricted O&amp;M funds, but not to the level that we needed. In July, we began our begging for bucks tour. Some of that had to be virtual. We raised our concerns with the Corps headquarters and with OMB to discuss the ongoing issues with FY22 and to talk about FY23 and FY24. So while our staff continued to push the Corps from our end, the federal delegation was pushing from theirs. Of note, Congressman Higgins personally made calls to Corps leadership on our behalf. And I think it was through these joint efforts, we were able to push the Corps to allocate additional unrestricted funds. And we ended up actually with more funding than we needed, which was fantastic. And so even though it felt dire earlier in the summer, we ultimately came out in a much better standing. But we certainly don't want to go through that every year. And so, you know, you can tell from those actions, we don't want to face those similar issues in FY23. And so we spent quite a bit of time, as I mentioned, kind of reframing and saying to the administration, look, we're doing some great things down here. Fund our projects. And so again, we continued the begging for bucks meetings in September. And, you know, your staff came up, as well as channel users to DC. We had some great meetings with the House and Senate Appropriations Committees, with our congressional delegation on the House side, and then also with our two senators. And we urged them to help with FY23 funding and then asked them to reach out to OMB before the FY24 president's budget even comes out. And so we're trying to kind of plant the seeds early for FY24. Again, as I mentioned, we are highlighting green initiatives that the port and our users are investing in. And just last week, we sat down with Corps headquarters again to discuss those initiatives. And in addition to the Corps and budget issues which get the most attention, I want to flag a few things we've done to raise the profile of the port and the ship channel. The executive director testified before the House Homeland Security Committee last year regarding the state of America's ports as we look to reopen after COVID. And again, our focus was, we're also dealing with kind of compound crises because of LARA and Delta and urging federal assistance. We've worked with, you know, your staff on FEMA reimbursement delays, which I know are, you know, exceed the work that we've done, but I think we were able to bring FEMA to the table on a couple of issues. We've had Senator Kennedy's projects director come down to the port and visit. He did that in August. And then Sam Graves, he's actually a member from Missouri, but soon to chair the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. He was down here in August. And that committee has jurisdiction over the Corps. And so he was able to see some of the work that we're doing. We've also been working with MARAD. Again, I know, I think Ricky, earlier you mentioned some funding that you're working on through Capital Outlay for those births four, five, and six. Also applied for a federal grant, which I think we're still waiting on with bated breath. They were supposed to announce these grants in September. So we feel like any day and certainly before the elections, I think they will be announced. And then there was an issue that we were working on with Channing related to the WARDA 7001 process. And you may not be familiar with that, but that's basically a process to identify new projects that you may want the Corps to fund. And while we were working on those submissions with Channing, we realized that the port does not qualify as a disadvantaged community as defined by the Corps. And so we highlighted that issue with Congressman Higgins' staff and suggested a workaround related to federally declared disasters. And so Congressman Higgins ultimately introduced some legislation earlier this year that would require the Secretary of the Army to include communities affected by major disasters in the definition of economically disadvantaged communities. So we're doing things like that that may not, you know, ultimately be directly tied to Corps funding, but again, we're trying to kind of leverage different areas of the federal government where we can. That will ultimately help, you know, you all. And again, we've helped with op-eds, letters of support, testimony, and federal register comments, just to name a few. Again, we appreciate the trust that you have given us to represent you on the federal level, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Down here. Appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for an excellent presentation.
And we've been very pleased with Peacock Group, Emily and her staff, Chuck and this group. They've done a great job for the Fortin Lake Charles.
With any other matters to come before the board? Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.